Good evening, welcome to the February 2nd Board of Selection Meeting. The meeting is being audio and video recorded. If you'd please stand as yours. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in every and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is an entertainment license amendment for Barrett's Dale House, 674 West Center Street. There's a number of things listed which I think the overwhelming majority are pretty self-explanatory.
Do we have to open the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing. Did you want to just briefly explain what you want to do?
Yeah, we're just going to kind of include everything that we could possibly do in our entertainment licenses in the future.
Okay. So I think for the most part, all of it's great. The only thing that might be a little controversial is the cabaret-type events. I know you've had a couple in the past, over the past few months. So I don't know if you want to just describe those a little more.
So the events we've had in the past are drag events, and they are, you know, basically just performers walking around dancing. They're fully clothed, they are, you know, they're provocative dancing, but they are private 21-plus ticketed events. The one that we're looking to have that I think is drawing the most attention is the male review show, which again is mostly clothed. There's no genitalia or buttock or anything like that involved, and we have the ability to tailor that to whatever is going to be allowed.
Okay. Questions?
What are typically the hours for these type of shows?
Typically 9:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., around.
I think I saw an advertisement for this one being just 8 to 10?
That may be accurate for this one, yes.
You know, what we do is we close the restaurant down to open up for people with tickets, so we screen everyone that comes in the building, so there aren't any underage kids or anything in the building when the performers come on.
So the performers, are they like up on a stage performing?
Yes, for the male burlesque show, yes, they are stationary on a stage. The drag shows, they walk around the restaurant.
Okay, but the male performers aren't out?
Correct.
Around the restaurant, around, in with the audience?
That's correct.
And you said they're partially dressed?
I believe they're topless, but again, we have that, the ability to ask them to do whatever as we're hiring them to perform.
And you're only looking for, is this list where you're saying burlesque male performers, does it continue? Is it just male performers?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're not looking to have female burlesque?
No. I mean, we try to have police details, but it's almost impossible to fill. We have security people, so it's well-supervised.
And how often are you looking to do this?
Ideally, I mean, the male performers is just one, but we try to get as many special events as possible to, you know, help draw attention and build sales.
So, I mean, I have an issue with this becoming a regular event, you know, every week, every other week.
Right now, it's like every 60 to 100 days right now. It could be as much as once a month on, for us to be able to pull it off correctly, we can't do one a week.
You can't do it because everyone's new room now, so it's impossible to, it's not a regular thing. Plus, it's very expensive. I mean, a drag show costs us over $2,000 bucks.
How much are the tickets?
20 bucks, right?
Yeah, depends on seating, but anywhere from 20 to $45.
And how much are the tickets for the burlesque?
The general admission is 25, and then we're doing VIP tables.
I mean, the burlesque is very different to me than the drag show, and again, I just, I have an issue with this being a regular type of event. I'd like to see it limited.
No problem with that.
I'm actually the opposite of that, and I've got three young kids. I didn't see this advertised in a negative way. I didn't see anything that my kids shouldn't have seen. Honestly, my girlfriends text me about this, and I was planning to go with them, so I'm not, I'm okay with it. It sounds to me as though you're trying to follow all the rules, you're making it 21-plus, and, I mean, the hours were 8 to 10, so I'm not too concerned about this being, you know, a wild event at 1:00 a.m.
I don't, I mean, I'm married with three kids, eight grandkids, and some of my grandkids are old enough to go to that, and quite frankly, I wouldn't have a problem with them going to the event. It's just not what I think fits with our town environment as a regular occurrence. Again, I don't have a big issue with it if it was limited. I just don't want to see burlesque lit up at Barrett's every Friday night. That's the way I feel. If it was maybe once every couple months, something like that, you know, you deserve to make money, I don't have a problem with that. I'd just like to see it fit in with the town. We're a farm town. I know it's changing a lot, but I'd like to think we're staying a farm town as long as we can.
But it's also going to depend on who wants to attend that event. It may not be West Bridgewater people.
Right. Who knows, I may be there too.
I'd put money on that.
But again, I'm just looking at where we are, who we are, and do you have any comments about that, if it was every other month?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we try to do everything above board. We try to run a good operation, so we don't want to offend anyone. We wouldn't allow anything to continue if it offend the people or cause problems. We're part of this community, so, and we want to stay part of it.
Okay. I tend to agree with you, Denise. I mean, I think six times per year is pretty reasonable.
Six times, they can do what? They can do any of those events, or you're just talking?
Well, everything else, whenever, I think we're just talking about the cabaret-type events.
The burlesque, I think, from what you explained about the drag show, that's, you know, fully clothed, sounds like a fun time. I think you said that's probably, it's 21-plus as well. I was looking mainly at the burlesque part, to be limited, six times per year. Were you thinking also the drag show part?
I'll kind of just turn to the burlesque.
No problem whatsoever.
So that sounds fair?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, I think we need to have a motion made. I'm trying to figure out how I word this motion.
A motion to approve the entertainment license as presented with burlesque limited to six times per year.
Okay, so that's the motion I just made, although I sounded differently.
Is there a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Is it appropriate to ask for tickets? No, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
It could be a call.
No, 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 it was only teasing. Don't worry, I'll share it with you, Denise.
All right, I vote to accept the meeting minutes of November 17th for review.
So moved.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
The cleaning for Town Hall and the DPW facility is up for re-procurement. We have a proposed contract with Above &amp; Beyond Cleaning. Is there a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
And Scott, you're up.
Hello.
How you doing? How are you?
Good. Budget season.
Oh, it happened so fast.
I know, feels like it was a test issue.
I know.
It's all about the numbers, your favorite part, right?
That's right, that's the job. So in the past, we've just kind of gone over what the differences are on any line items. Is that how you wanted to do it still?
Yeah, sounds good.
So the first budget up is the Treasurer Collector Budget, number 1450. First line is the 2% raise for me, 5112, the Fiscal Clerk. That's down 10% because Tori, in my office, left her job, and we hired a new person in at a lower step, so that's the decrease in salary there.
Is that a union position?
Yes.
Okay.
The 5118 is the Assistant Treasurer, Maureen, that's her 2% raise. The Delinquent Tax Collector is Gene. The difference in that line, I think, comes as a result of a mis-cal-
The number of days, is it up 52.2 versus 52.3?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry.
Nope, that's good.
Did this too many times.
And then everything else is level from last year.
Okay, next?
Next budget is the Retirement of Debt, 7100. The only change in this, this is all our debt service that we have out, most of this is long-term bonds. These are all set up for the next, for the duration of the bonds. The 5910, Principal School, that's down $45,000 because we paid off a high school roof project from 20 years ago.
20 years ago?
Yeah, it was a 20-year loan.
On a school that's not there anymore?
Yes.
Wow.
And other than that, there's just a small bump up in one of the $39 on our WPAT, wastewater studies loans. And then the BAN's line, 5922, that's our short-term borrowing, and that goes to pay off the annual municipal purpose loan that you guys approve in November.
All right?
All right. The next one is the Interest on Long-Term Debt, 7510. The interest figures dropped this year for a couple reasons. Interest goes down generally every year because there's less principal to pay off, so that's the main one. The first line is the school, that's, there's still 20 million left to pay off on that, so the interest is still pretty high, so that dropped 80,000. And then we also refinanced a loan last year. We went from a 4.5% or 5% loan down to a .36% loan.
Wow.
So we're going to save about $200,000 over the course of the remaining borrowing.
Why was it so low? How did you get such a significant swing?
Interest rates had just plummeted, you know?
That's a huge difference.
Yeah, so our financial advisor said that was the lowest rate she'd ever seen on anything, so we saved-
And that has to do with like the triple, the bond rating and all of that?
Yep, the bond rating and then the market, so it just, it worked out really well. We saved, it was 12% of the total cost that we saved.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yep, so that's the 27,000, that's most of that savings there.
What's our bond ratings, Greg?
With S&amp;P, it's double A.
Plus?
Plus, yeah. Double A plus, second highest.
What's the goal, to get to the highest? What do you think is necessary?
It's tough right now because we had our bond review when we did this refunding.
Oh, that's right.
And they kept us at double A plus. They're very wary because the market's so all over the place right now, so they're not really moving anybody up, so what we need to do, we need to fund our long-term post-employment benefits a little more.
Which we are doing some each year.
Yeah, we are.
But, okay.
It's a big, it's like a $40 million number for the town, and we're at 800,000, so, you know, that's a long-term goal, and we can get some more financial practices in writing, something that they've been looking for, just kind of to commit the town forward.
Like standard operating procedures for your office?
Not so much the office, more with how the town spends money and commits to funding the long-term benefits and stuff like that. Yeah, it's something that's been kind of on the back burner, but it's something I want to get done.
Okay.
All right.
And then the only other line is the Interest on Short-Term Debt, 7520. We've kept this standard 50,000 year-over-year. Right now, the interest on the debt is low, but any extra money I have in that line, we go off to pay other short-term debt, so.
All right.
Good job.
Any questions or comments?
Is there another one?
Nope.
That's it?
Oh, that's awesome. Good job.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David, is John Akars the hall?
He is. I just had to email him to let everyone know we're running.
David, do you want to do yours while we're waiting?
Sure. So 1720 Agricultural Commission, all of these budgets are pretty small dollar amounts and all level-funded year-over-year. I'll go through them quick, and then if you have questions, let me know. The Agricultural Commission is level-funded at 600. Women's Place Crisis Center is level-funded at 2750. Bark, which is based out of Brockton, is level-funded at $250. Old Colony Hospice Care is level-funded at $2,000. And Plymouth County Extension Services is level-funded at $200.
Any questions or comments on those?
No, those are nice and straightforward.
John is going to come into Hong Kong, but Mary, when he is going to present open space, and she's not going to come until a little later, so if that's okay, these scripts and stuff like that, he'll be right-
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wow, we're up to the 7 o'clock one.
Yes.
Hi, John.
Good evening.
How are you?
I think, am I going to sit right here, or?
Perfect.
Yes. Unless you want to sit up here, of course.
I hurried me up with these snuggles.
All right, we're ready for you.
All righty. I'm here tonight to present the conservation portion. I know you haven't scheduled to do open space, but did you already explain?
Yeah, that's right, yep.
So the approach that I took is to try to comply with your requirement of level service, and as you can probably see, the budget has increased in terms of the clerical position because I want to make it a full-time position. We currently have a part-time situation, and it demands a lot of my time to do the other part of the administrative work that can't be done for those part-time hours. What is happening is that some of the mandates that the EPA has for us to do with the stormwater is being put to the side, and unfortunately, in some of my annual reports to them, I've had to indicate that we haven't accomplished what goals they had set for us to do as part of our permit. So I've been putting that off because I've been doing some of the administrative work, and I also am not getting out to all of the sites as often as I should to make sure that they're complying with the conditions of the permit that we issued, and so I guess you could say that the wetlands are not getting the attention that they should. And occasionally, I find that if I had been out a little bit more often, I could have averted some damages to the wetlands from erosion and that kind of thing that they're supposed to be taken care of, but they need somebody to follow up with them. So that is a line item that increased. The other item that I increased was for equipment replacement, and the previous years, we were supposed to be taking water samples and trying to identify if there were contaminants coming through the stormwater system, and if there are, we have to trace down why and where are they coming from. Is it illicit discharge from a septic system? And we haven't done any of those at all. Deb Taylor, who's working as the GIS person, has had experience in it before she came to work for the town of West Bridgewater. So she and I have been working together on a strategy on how this next reporting year, we can accomplish some sampling and some screening, and if it requires sending something to the lab, we will, but we can get these test kits that, and some equipment that analyzes and screens it for potentials, and if you get us a hit, you can then send it to the lab. We don't want to send everything to the lab. So I've increased that by $500. And I do have some money in the budget this year, so I plan to buy some equipment and supplies this year, and then in the next fiscal year. And then I think we'll be in good shape.
Are you 35 hours now?
I am 36.
Okay, I forgot what the last change was.
Wasn't there a penalty to a local town for an MS4 issue recently?
I have seen them.
Well, not that recently, but not that long ago either. Is, that something we should be concerned about?
Definitely. I think their lowest fine is $50,000, and what they, what they end up doing is they say, well, you're going to get fined, but you immediately have to start doing what you promised that, or what you promised you'd do for our permit, and so there's no timeframe. At least at this point, if I put in my report that we're trying and that we're making attempts, it may not be full compliance, but at least it's not neglecting it, and so I tend to be a little bit more understanding in that, but once they fine you, they don't want any excuses at that point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think everything John presented makes sense. Not having someone in that office full-time, you can't be in there full-time because you need to be out on the road.
That's right, and then-
And, that's okay. And people tend to think that conservation's about just protecting the plants. If the wetlands are filled, the water's going to go somewhere, and it's likely into someone's basement, so there's a lot more to your department than just protecting those plants.
Okay, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
David, do you want to start with your report?
Sure. So under PFAS, we've had, we have some pretty good news. So historically, Stations 1, 2, and 3, I'm sorry, 1, 2, and 4 have always been low, and we can see Station 3, which is the mailing one, is at 17 and 1/2, sorry, I misspoke earlier, but it is still below 20, and 20 is the new metric from DEP. So that's good news. That means for the month of January, we are in compliance. We know that the board has already approved money to be spent in order to do a mitigation effort with the carbon filtration system, which is waiting on approval from DEP. They have to review it. But again, good news. Next is the cherry sheets. So this is the governor's budget. Massachusetts constitutional requirement is that the governor submits a budget to the legislative branch, and the legislative branch will then spend the next handful of months, debate it, vote on something, and then the governor will sign it in. Supposed to all take place by July 1st, and he is, I believe, required to submit a budget by February 1st. I'm saying he, it's a he, but he or she as governor. We do have good news at this point, our budget, right now, the net increase in our local aid is a little over $700,000, so that would be extremely helpful if that is how it all plays out, but obviously, we'll see what the final numbers are, because there'll certainly be a lot of wrangling back and forth. But the state is flush with increase in revenues year-over-year that they didn't anticipate, and also with a lot of federal funds money that's been diverted for the normal cost, so hopefully this sticks together. COVID tests, you know, the state made available to 102 communities at the end of December, early January, free COVID tests based on certain criteria, and unfortunately, West Bridgewater didn't qualify. So we received some criticism because some of our neighboring towns or cities like Brockton receive the tests and they could go and get them for free, and we all know, it wasn't just a matter of money, you couldn't buy the tests anywhere. So it was very disheartening that we didn't qualify. I want to give credit to Plymouth County. Plymouth County had leftover money at the end of 2021 through the CARES Act that was unspent, and rather see the money go back to the federal government. What they did was that they proactively went out and purchased a couple hundred thousand COVID tests. The state usurped it and took it first, so that's why there was some delay, but again, I want to give Plymouth County credit. They did a really nice job on this, and they reached out and we've been talking to them for a handful of weeks. All the tests came in last week. The town of West Bridgewater received 4,000 tests, so that gives us just about enough for every single household in town and in their residence. So with that said, we dropped off a handful of the COA, so the COA can hand them out to seniors. We also already dropped off enough for the entire population at the seniors, at the Housing Authority, so all of them have tests as well. And then the balance is at the fire station. We posted on Facebook and on our website that those free tests are available for the number in their household. All they have to do is come down to the fire station to pick up. We did have some people come in yesterday, and we'll continue to obviously distribute them going forward. And the last is my state of town address, so I know we'll have to hold off on that. I do know the fire chief is on his way, he's en route.
John Cruz as well.
Okay, good.
David, are those 4,000 test kits with two each, or are they just individual?
No, my NSAs have been two each. So we received 2,000 packets.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is there a motion for a brief recess while we wait?
So moved.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
Okay, well, I'm here for two budgets tonight. One is the wastewater treatment facility. So as you can see, we're requesting a little bit more money this year from last year. I think some of the money's going for our consultant services. Let's see. Hundred bucks or whatever, so it's not really a lot of money. And what that budget does, obviously, it just maintains the leaching fields that we have for the properties for our town buildings. As you know, the system on Spring Street, Howard School, soccer field, it takes all the buildings on that part of town. And we have our own septic tank here, on-site septic here, and then we have another at the Rozelle. It's pretty much it. We've got a huge investment on the Howard School. So at Cabral's, our official, that, I mean, he's an engineer. He files reports and documentation that's needed for DEP. And if there's any questions, he may, you know, he lets us know and we move accordingly. It's a small, small item on that one.
Go next.
Next is border health. So the difference from fiscal ninety, fiscal, yeah, ninety-three, twenty-three, to what we have now is like four thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred. We added, I don't know what you guys are doing for raises for the board. We put two percent in for the board. We have a new inspector for Barnes, another fifteen hundred bucks. And we have contractual stuff.
Is that an additional?
Well, we have to, yeah, we need two of them, two inspectors of buildings, Barnes.
Specifically Barnes?
Well, we have, we only have one now, so we need an assistant. That's about it. So we're going from one eighty to, one eighty-six, six-five to one eighty-four, oh, one-one. That's it in a nutshell.
Any questions or comments?
Comments, concerns? Beautiful.
No, I don't have anything.
All right.
Beautiful.
Thank you, John.
Great. Thanks for your time, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Do you have an idea about who he is?
He said he was en route, so I assumed he was coming from the station, but he may have been coming from home.
He told Linda about ten minutes.
Do you want to do public comment period?
Guess we could take another recess.
So moved.
Second.
On our favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Floor is yours.
Hello.
How you doing?
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming in early.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime.
So do you just want to go through any adjustments?
Sure. We can start at the top. The first adjustment would be a negative adjustment due to salary. The approved was one forty-two, zero, five, two, but it actually is one thirty-eight, seven, twenty.
What's the difference?
Just difference in salary from what the previous chief was making. That was approved last year already when I took over. So I just adjusted it for this year.
Okay, thanks.
Second one is clerical five-one-one-two. That goes up two percent per CBA. So that's an increase of seven hundred, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The third increase would be one hundred and thirty-two thousand, zero, six, zero, which is an eight percent increase, which what I would call the phase one of increase of one firefighter staffing level. Also going through a grant opportunity that we have for a, zero cost to the town for three years for a new firefighter.
Is that limited to one firefighter per year for the grant?
It is limited to however much we ask for. So we can ask for three, we can ask for four, we can ask for zero. It's no cost for the town for three years. And after the three years is up, the town, you know, makes appropriation to say that they will do their best to retain them. But that's basically the gist of the grant for, so it's basically one-on-one. One for a new firefighter, one through the grant.
And your long-term goal is to have four additional?
That's correct, yeah. Four total. If you would like me to elaborate on that a little bit, I can.
Yes.
Could I just ask?
Sure.
Why you wouldn't be putting two through the grant?
I can if that's the wishes of the Board of Selectmen. I know the ultimate goal for the fire, the fire chief myself, is for, to round out the shifts at five. Mainly, you know, because since mid-December, since I've been tracking this, we've had twenty-five box alarm responses. Box alarms are summoning in off-duty personnel. Out of that twenty-five, there's been thirty-four total. If we were at five personnel a shift, we wouldn't have to put on those box alarms and request off-duty personnel to respond to the fire station. So this would be my responsible request to start that process to get us to where I feel like we need to be in order to alleviate having to rely on off-duty personnel.
And do you think that's going to reduce your overtime line? Where do you think the impact will be?
Ultimately, it would, because we're relying less on people that are at home. So we're relying more on the firefighters that are on duty to take both ambulances out for two medicals. Just last night at seven P M., we had both ambulances out at different medical incidents. A third call came in with nobody in the fire station. We had a fire alarm at ten Turnpike Street. I came in from off-duty, from home, was able to summon a mutual aid engine company to meet me at ten Turnpike Street. It ended up being a broken sprinkler pipe, but it wasn't a fire, thankfully. But when we respond out, we don't have people at the fire station to take another truck or, more importantly, to do our communications. Talk to the ambulances as they're transporting people from medicals, talking to the fire department personnel that are on scene of a call to summon Boston Med Flight, a hazmat incident, to get more help, and basically to retain our times and numbers for when we go out on calls. It also reflects that one thirty-two, zero, six, zero also reflects the two percent increases for the CBA for fiscal year twenty-three.
And Denise, in fairness to the chief, he and I had discussed about how we wanted to fund the two positions. Being in charge of the budgeting process, I was, I'm concerned about trying to smooth out the hit to the town.
Exactly.
Because if we do two through the grant now, in three years, we're going to now have to fund both of them through the budget. If we fund one now through the budget, and we fund one later in the budget, it just smoothes out that hit. God bless you. But obviously, it's the board who makes the final decision. But in fairness to the chief, he presented it this week, because it's what he and I had discussed.
Is there any risk of this grant going away? Does it have a life?
It's been reality for the last at least ten years. It's a, so the, I'll give you just kind of the flip notes to it. The priorities of this grant is to bring firefighters into compliance with NFPA one-seven-one-zero, which is four firefighters staffed on a piece of apparatus to a structure fire. We need four either on, two on the ladder truck, two on the engine, with one man in communications. So this grant would get us to that par level if we so choose to go for it. And it's been around since two thousand and two. And each year, it's different. They actually infuse some funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to bolster some of the money into this grant.
Is there a maximum amount they will provide for grants each year? Is there a cap? I mean, if every town goes for two firefighters, someone's not going to get-
Correct, yeah. So they anticipate about five hundred grants being approved. And the total amount of money is five hundred and sixty million dollars.
Do you know how many grants were issued last year?
I do not know. No. It's around five hundred.
So it's right up there. How are we doing with mutual aid? Are we relying a lot on other towns?
We rely about seventy times per year on mutual aid. And that's when, say, an ambulance, both the ambulances are out doing runs, or we're out on Route twenty-four doing an accident or medical on Route twenty-four. We have nothing available in the station or personnel. So we rely on mutual aid during those incidents. Also during any type of fire or hazardous materials-related incident, we require, you know, an extra engine company or ladder company from a mutual aid department. And that's all counted as one. So if we receive four vehicles, we have a big fire, we receive four vehicles, that's one mutual aid.
Is that a significant increase from prior years, or are we just creeping along with more, or is it flat?
The priority level is more in West Bridgewater. We're not relying more on mutual aid. We're relying more on having the fire department, nobody there. And nobody there to answer the radio when both ambulances are out transporting people or when that third call comes in. Out of those twenty-five incidents since mid-December, a five-personnel shift wouldn't have had to put on that tone.
Twenty-five incidents since when?
Mid-December. Out of thirty-four total.
How much is the salary for this new position?
His, the salary for the grant and also for the new position would be sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents.
All right. I don't know if I did the math right, but it looked like a two percent increase was only about thirty-two thousand. What's the, what's the hundred thousand dollar increase?
There might be some step.
Yes, correct. Yes, there's a step, one firefighter gets a step raise, and it's also for a new firefighter.
All right.
Quick question on equipment repairs. I've been seeing this over and over. People seem to need more money for equipment repairs. Is as much work being done in-house, or does stuff need to be done?
So we require, so as you can see, sixteen thousand dollars is appropriated for us. We require fourteen thousand dollars for required maintenance plans and preventative maintenance plans.
Oh, wow. So that only leaves you a couple grants.
Two thousand, correct.
Okay.
And mostly, we actually also have a grant in the queue now for the federal government for new SCOT, SCBA air packs.
Okay.
That's been most of the money. They're fifteen years old now, and battery boards, electronics go on them, require about five hundred dollars a pop each time we send them out for repair. So we only have two thousand dollars to play with in the budget to get those repaired and keep them in service. So hopefully, you know, we'll find out by the end of this year that we get a grant for new air packs. But if we don't, we're still going to be in the same boat that we're in now. We have two cardiac monitors that are on each ambulance. And also, the stretchers and stair chairs are required per the state of Massachusetts to be maintained every year, yearly.
Sorry, thank you.
If you want me to move on, I can go to five-one-three-zero, which is three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that's just reflects the increase for, that's for overtime recall, just for the yearly salary raises. And that's for five-one-three-five, five-one-three-six, and five-one-three-nine. That reflects the annual two percent for the CBAs. For five-one-four-zero, it's an increase of a hundred and twenty-one dollars, because we have one lieutenant that has reached twenty-five years of service with the town of West Bridgewater. For five-one-nine-two, excuse me, five-two-zero-seven, that's for online permitting for the building and fire departments.
What's the five hundred dollar decrease in educational incentive?
That's actually for me. I don't get an educational incentive anymore as a fire chief. That reflects that we have three, let me just double-check. Yeah, we have three personnel who, excuse me, four personnel that have either an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree. I went from a master's degree up to chief level, so that is not required anymore. So that's, that's why it decreased.
You're fully educated now.
Yeah. I've got my doctorate there, that's right. So for five-two-zero-seven, that's for online permitting. The total cost for online permitting is four thousand dollars. But with a twenty-five hundred dollar increase, it's something we can manage within the fire department without asking for the full four thousand. And then the last increase is for equipment repairs and maintenance, five-two-four-three, for four thousand.
Okay.
To round it up to twenty.
Any other questions or comments?
Any thoughts on capital budget?
Thoughts on capital budget? I don't have any major ask at the moment. The only ask that I do have, that I'm planning for, is to fund in case we do get the air packs. I also wrote for a federal grant for twenty thousand dollars for a new power lift system for the older ambulance. As you may know, we have a new ambulance on order. Unfortunately, it hasn't been processed yet through Ford, because they're going through delays, but it is in the queue. What was supposed to be delivered by July is probably end of fall, early winter time now. But we have a power lift system in the, ask for the federal government in order to equip that with our second ambulance, and that was for twenty thousand dollars. And our cost share would be about eleven hundred, but we can, we can absorb that in the operating budget for the fire department. The only ask right now for capital budget would be for the SCBA packs if we were to get them, and it would be about ten thousand dollars. And that's it. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming early.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too.
Have a good night.
All right. Open Space Committee.
How are you? I don't know if you've met Mary, but Mary's the chairperson of the Open Space Committee. And late last fall, up until late last fall, I was the secretary of the Open Space Committee. But I had to resign so that I could spend a little bit more time doing the chores with the conservation and stormwater. So I thought I would help her out this evening by showing her the ropes and giving, giving the budget.
It's not that bad. It's really not that bad. Thank you for coming early.
So the budget is the same as last year, except we rearranged some of the items so that they reflect a little closer to what the committee actually does. And their primary work is to do some programs, educational programs and events. And so rather than just- And so rather than just taking money from here and putting it there type of thing, when we were getting reimbursed, we wanted to make it a little bit more reflective of what they did. And so, Mary, that's pretty much all you have to do at this point.
Yeah, just watch out for that finance committee, they're tough. I've heard about them. Well, this is great. Thank you for volunteering and coming in.
You're welcome, thank you.
Gee, it wasn't so bad, was it?
No, no.
No questions?
We're mainly watching that bottom line to see if it goes up or, you know. If it goes down, we're okay, it stays flat.
All right. That's all.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the town has been very supportive of the Open Space Committee, and they do a fantastic job. And my heart's still with it, and I will try to occasionally do things with them. But it's on a, not as regular as it was. So you should be, as well as I, am proud of what that committee is doing.
I'm fortunate to have volunteers willing to fill these committees and care about the town. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. David?
You're ready? Okay, good. So, this is my sixth State of the Town address in all cover of the year 2021. Unfortunately, 2021 was a continuation of 2020 in many ways. Remember at the end of 2020, when we had slogans such as "Good riddance, and 2021 will be such a much better year"? Regrettably, mostly due to COVID, 2021 looked just like 2020, and in many cases, was actually worse. Mask mandates, vaccination requirements, does vaccination mean two shots, one shot, booster, two boosters? Still trying to always figure that out. Strong opinions on every side exists. And as a town simply attempting to deliver services to our citizens, it was very hard to sidestep all of the landmines. I want to provide the board some quick and basic numbers. At the end of 2021, the state's vaccination rate as a total was 75%, and the town is 72. In 2020, we had 307 total cases of COVID. In 2021, it jumped to 1364. The United States in 2020 had 20 million, and in 2021 had 55 million. And sadly, 346,000 deaths in the U.S. in 2020, 560,000 in 2021. You could see that in the town, we had eight deaths due to COVID in 2020, and 13 in 2021. So when it came to COVID, in some ways, 2020 was a bad year, but 2021 was actually much worse. Local issues continued to abound, such as how do we keep employees from getting sick while still continuing to deliver services? As in 2020, a myriad of federal and state legislation was dizzying, and burnout was real for many employees. I would like to state the following and reiterate it as to what I said last year. I would really like to commend our employees throughout this troubling time. The DPW continued to plow and pave. Fire and police continued to provide top-notch public safety. All of our inspectors never missed a beat. The COA continued to furnish lunches to our seniors, and the library remained as the go-to library in the region. Our schools continue to be on battleground for a difference between, excuse me, in-person learning versus remote learning. But our school administration, teachers, and students remain positive throughout. While everyone made the best of the situation, I would be lying if I didn't state that there were many sleepless nights. For example, I continued to remain late night, stay awake at night, wondering, what happens if most of our DPW department gets sick during a snowstorm? How do you continue to plow? We can't just call people in. Everyone is COVID fatigued at this point. And the reality is, is that sooner or later, it's going to have to become a social norm that we're just going to have to live with it. It is what it is. 2021 did see some changes of note. First, this room, the Board of Selectment Meeting Room, was named after the longest-serving selectman in town history, Eldon Marrera. It's now called the Eldon Marrera Meeting Room. Fire Chief Kenny May, after dedicating over 20, 30 years of service, of his life to the service of the town, decided to retire. And as you met the chief earlier, I think we were in very good hands with the new chief, but we really wish Kenny well in his retirement. Library Director Alan Snoyebus also retired, and our infectious smile and positivity will be missed. And we wish Laura new success in her new role as a director. While these changes occurred, one thing that did not change is the makeup of this board. Congratulations to Denise for winning reelection, and the town will continue to benefit from your dedication and leadership. Speaking of leadership, I think the selectmen showed great leadership at this past year's annual town meeting. The board was able to figure out a way to make sure that in equitable and fair fashion that all employees received a raise after going through such a troubling time. And during this past year, the town continued to reinvest into itself, which is a key positive characteristic of any well-run organization. New sidewalks were still constructed. A facelift to War Memorial Park occurred. Preservation of cemeteries continued to happen. And new vehicles for the school, the police, and the DPW were all purchased. The fire department was able to receive a needed new ambulance, or at least be approved for. The town also approved a TIF agreement with a large warehouse to be constructed on Lincoln Street. And once full taxation begins, the town will actually realize well over $1 million per year in additional revenue. Historically, the town has been very fiscally conservative. The board has continued to balance the needs of the departments while also considering the effects of the escalating tax bill. I want to drill down on the subject for just one moment. The town's average tax bill for FY 2022 is $6,199. But I want the board and the public to note that that's actually $200 less than the average municipal tax bill throughout the entire state. But what's even more impressive is that when I actually take out all Western municipalities, so if I take Worcester West, include Worcester, but go Worcester, Worcester, the average tax bill in the greater Boston area is $7,700. So our tax bill is actually $1,500 less per year than the average tax bill in eastern Massachusetts. And this is a much more indicative comparison, and the reason being, most Western towns do not have full-service towns. Many of those small towns don't have a full police department or a fire department. They certainly don't all run COAs. Some of them just rely on state police. They have no local public safety. We run a full-service town, so I think it's a much better comparison. And quite frankly, I know government is becoming more expensive. Nobody's happy with the increase in their tax bills, but in comparison to our peers, we have done a very good job. When I started your town administration in 2013, the town only had $3,000 in excess levy capacity, meaning that the town was actually taxing all the way up to its maximum allowable levy limit. Remaining fiscally conservative, the town today has $2.5 million in allowable excess capacity. The message to that is, is that the board again has been very, very careful and conservative in the past. We have not taxed all the way up to our levy limit. At $2.5 million, West Bridgewater ranks 58th in the state, meaning that 300, because remember, there's 351 municipalities. Almost 300 municipalities out there have less levy capacity than the town of West Bridgewater. That's pretty impressive. And if you were able to base it on a percentage basis, which the DLS doesn't break out, I bet you we'd be in the top 10. Because when you have a small budget, 2.5 million's a pretty big number. You know, the cities that are ahead of us, it's like the city of Cambridge, well, they've got a billion-dollar budget. So if they've got $3 million of excess capacity, that's peanuts in comparison to us. So without, this financial discipline has allowed the town of West Bridgewater to remain so, be at this number. So while being fiscally conservative has its benefits, it is also has its downfalls. And I believe it is time for us to begin to put some of this excess capacity to the work. The town has grown and continues to grow. So for comparison's sake, I want to provide the following. From 2000 to 2020, the town grew 17% population from census to census, while the state only grew at 13%. But we also grew a whopping 32% in households. That means we have more roads, we have more people to service. More streets for DPW and water to have to address, more services at the library and the COA, and more homes for the police and fire to service as well. In addition to those numbers, we currently have 90 three- and four-bedroom homes being built on Scotland Street, of 54 and a 24-unit apartment complexes respectively already permitted and waiting for construction. There is a proposed large development on the Brockton border that, if comes to fruition, could add hundreds of more homes in that area. And that all doesn't take into effect the dozen or so new homes that are just built every single year under normal practice. When you take into account that the town is rich in farmland and open space, it is easy to see that another 30% increase in population of households is very likely. Words cannot truly capture the stress that is being added to our departments and to our schools with this population increase. The town is going to have to make some tough choices going forward. Do we continue to deliver first-class services? Understand that they will be costly. Or do we pull back on services in order to be able to save money? My recommendation to the board is that we move forward with continuing to deliver and expand on our services. While more households meets more roads to plow and pave, our staffing has not grown accordingly. For example, in 2000, the highway and forestry departments had a total of eight laborers combined. Today, we have nine. In 2000, the building department generated $86,000 in total fees. Last year, it generated $215,000. It's already generated $143,000 this year, and is on pace to potentially get to $300,000. The DPW needs additional help, and so does the building commissioner. The town added a police officer last year. And this year, we need to seriously consider taking advantage of federal programs in order to hire firefighters within the fire department. In your office, for example, you permit almost 100% more businesses than you did in 2000. And thanks to the 30% increase in population, the town, Linda and Lorna also feel countless more inquiries from residents. Yet, your staffing is identical to what it was 22 years ago. At some time, we are going to have to add someone. The town's growth has also been haphazard. We need to desperately hire a full-time planner to assist the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, and the building commissioner. This person would also conduct an extensive review of our zoning bylaws, because they haven't been updated in decades. They really need to be reviewed. While stress is up, West Bridgewater continues to shine because of the excellence of our department heads and their respective staff. Yet, we just simply cannot continue to try to get more with less. We have the capacity, we have the ability, and it's time that we address these needs. On a personal level, I will tell you that my biggest task and accomplishment this year was managing the daily grind of dealing with year two of COVID. I truly envy the day that we can just all do our jobs and not worry about trying to figure out and manage the nuance of a declared public health emergency. On a day-to-day basis, the staff in your office makes sure that all licenses are handled, resident complaints are addressed, and the town continues to move in a positive direction. I really mean this when I say it. All three of you are personally connected to the town. You know a lot of people, most people have your cell phones. And when you think of the minimum amount of complaints that you receive, hopefully, it's an indication to the three of you as to what the work is being done in the office, so that way we can make sure all of those get handled. I remain in awe watching Lorna and Linda excel on a regular basis. In full transparency, there are a couple of areas that I wish I had still accomplished in 2021. I really want to get a healthcare opt-out program up and running. I need to revisit that again this year. And the second thing is, is that being a small town, I really want us to have a better direct conduit to our state delegation. You know, Walter and Michelle, I need to meet with them more. We need to get them more involved. We need to be more involved with them, because we are not taking advantage of every single program, because we probably just aren't even aware of them. But that takes time, and the reality is, 125, 150 emails per day, I just get mired in day-to-day activity. It's just very difficult to do. On a positive note, not a single union grievance reached the board. And in nine years, it's one of my proudest moments, because we've only had one grievance actually reach that level. You know, we take great pride in trying to be fair and reasonable to all of our employees. And I think that our employees are also phenomenal in return, and that's why we have a good working relationship. I thank the board very much for your support in trusting me in this leadership. I would also like to take a moment to say thank you to the hundreds of volunteers in this town that really make the town tick. All the volunteer committee members and the volunteer organizations. They really are the real engine of this town. And lastly, while we turned the page in 2021, we are now going to gear up for the town's 200th birthday celebration in only a couple of weeks. I'm looking forward to it. I think it's really going to be an amazing and wonderful year. I genuinely believe that the town of West Bridgewater is an incredible town. Sincerely, I am so proud to work here, to work for this board, and to call West Bridgewater my adopted home. To the board, I thank you for your help and your guidance. I watch each one of you individually and collectively contribute countless of hours behind the scenes, because I know how much you all really care and love this town. I know how hard all of you work. I feel privileged to work for this board. I know all of us work, feel very privileged to be part of the town of West Bridgewater. And thank you.
Thank you, David. This is not a time to discuss any job appointments, if anyone has any comments.
David, I think you do a great job. I know that you answer countless calls, complaints from the residents. I know you make yourself available on weekends, evenings. You're here late a lot at night. You're a wealth of knowledge. Coming into this job, I didn't realize how much our town administrator, well, first of all, I didn't realize how much we were lacking. And when you stepped into this position, and then eventually I came along, I realized how much a town administrator needs to know about not only municipal law, but also human resources, and then the emergencies, how our fire departments operate. You have a vast wealth of knowledge, and I think you've done a great job, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other comments? All right. Thank you, David. And I agree with Denise, you've done a great job.
Well, thank you.
Along with Lorna and Linda and pretty much everyone else. All right. That's all. We are going into executive session, so I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session not to return to open session for purposes of contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the confidential secretary and the town administrator.
So moved.
Second.
And it's a roll call vote.
Anderson, yes?
Raise, yes.
And Kenan, yes. We are now in executive session.